Commissioner Sleet is going to do our invocation this morning.
May we bow our heads? Precious Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us. We ask, oh God, that you would lead and direct us to take care of business that's been put before us this morning. We ask, Lord, that you would just give us the knowledge to do the thing, the right things, and treat people right in the way that we want to be treated. This and all I ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Welcome to Danville, Boyle County Planning and Zoning, April 26th meeting. Call to order, approval of minutes from the March 22nd meeting and the March 29th special call meeting. We'll make a motion to approve. Commissioner Manning has made a motion to approve. Commissioner Davenport has made a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report.
Yeah, let's just, a couple of words about it. If you turn to the second page, there's the one that says, oh, statement of account activities on the top. And we'll go to the first part, which is our income. We're three quarters away through the year. So if we were right on budget, if you look at the far right-hand column under revenue plus beginning, well, under total commission revenue, where it says eighty-one percent, we'd be at seventy-five percent. So we're over, over plan right now in terms of, of revenue. And then the major contributors of it, in terms of year-to-date contributors, if you look up our construction review fees, we're about $8,000 stronger than, than what our budget would have through the first, oh, nine months of the year. Zone change and flume apps are about $2,000 stronger. And subdivision apps are about $4,000 above the year-to-date budget. And zoning permits, for whatever reason, is about $3,000 under, oh, the, what we had for a budget standpoint. And so overall, we're about $11,000 over year-to-date revenue. Any comments that you would make, Michaela, on any of those or any observations?
Uh, no, nothing additional to add.
Okay. If you flip the page over and look at the bottom where it says, oh, total expenditures, way at the bottom, you can see that our total expenditures are like sixty-three percent of total year budget. Again, if we were right on plan, it'd be seventy-five percent. So we're, we've underspent, oh, the budget year-to-date. And about twenty-two, we're actually about $26,000 below budget on spending year-to-date. And $22,000 of that is personnel costs because we didn't have a director for a few months. And we know that. So that's, that's the majority of it. I won't comment on the other couple of things. So overall, we're in, you know, good shape financially. We're, oh, under budget on expenses and over budget on revenue, oh, year-to-date.
Thank you for your report. Do we need a motion to accept the financial report? Is that Commissioner Ruby? Got a motion from Commissioner Ruby and a second from Commissioner Noette. All in favor of the motion? Motion passes. Thank you. Construction charities.
Yeah, there have been no changes from March to April. We don't have any new renewals until July of 2023, so we're in good shape right now. No new projects at the moment.
Do we need a motion?
I'm not sure if we do or not.
Okay.
No.
Subdivision approvals. We have a, uh, tabled, uh, from the March 22nd, so we need a motion to untable the first subdivision approval.
I make a motion to untable the first item.
All right. Commissioner Collier makes a motion to untable.
I'll second.
Commissioner Douglas seconds. All in favor? Motion passes. Melissa?
Uh-huh. Just a second. Okay. Adam Woodward has applied for the subdivision of a 3.990 acre parcel of land that's located at forty-six eighty-seven and forty-seven oh five, Chenault Bridge Road in Boyle County. The property is zoned ag. Cam is the surveyor. It was tabled March 22nd and resubmitted for TRS review on April 12th. They were combining and re-dividing multiple tracks to end up creating Track Two and Track One C One. All suggested corrections have been made, including clarification on the purpose statement, uh, lot composition clarification, ownership noted on the track slots, the addition of a non-conforming note for the residents in One C One, um, and readjustment of the lot line to create Track One C One at an ag lot minimum of the 1.15 acres. It's ready for preliminary and final approval today. Oh, I'm sorry. Final approval. Forgive me.
Mr. Chair, I move you approve.
Okay. Commissioner Ruby's made a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Commissioner Manning, second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Motion passes.
Thanks for making that easy.
Could I, um...
No, I mean it because this was one of those where we went back and said, there's a whole bunch of stuff that needs to be done. And they went back and did it. That's how you make it easy. That's what I'm saying. Thanks for that.
Lisa, there was, uh, Adam Woodward had a different one that was tabled last time in the meeting minutes. Is that one being resolved or addressed? That was for four point five acres?
Yeah. Yeah, that one's been withdrawn.
Okay.
The, it's not on sanitary sewer, so they're not able to subdivide that lot unless they were, unless they were to decide to run sewer out to it.
Since our meeting minutes last time had that tabled, do we need to do something at this point in time to remove it?
I think it just takes off after nine days.
I think the applicant is allowed to withdraw it himself.
And we can just say that. That's fine.
He's here if he wants to say officially it's withdrawn.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the Dogon Lane property that you talked about, so I'm just going to keep the original lot that was there. I can't remember the guy's name that I talked to. They've actually officially given that an address now too, so.
Okay.
So that, that should be fine.
I'm fine with that. You just, I just wanted to clean the minutes up because otherwise we'll have one dangling out there. So show that it's being closed.
Then we can remove that one.
Okay.
Yep, that works. Thanks, Adam.
Okay. Um...
You're all set.
All right. We're going to take, uh, two through five together.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Secondly, Caldwell Stone Company has applied for the subdivision of fourteen point eight five nine acre parcel of land located at zero Lancaster Road, AKA Highway fifty-two, Danville. The property is zoned IBD. Vantage is the surveyor. They are creating Track A at six point eight five seven acres and Track B at eight point oh oh two acres from the parent tract of Caldwell Stone, leaving about seventeen acres therein. And they're also creating an access easement on Track B for the benefit of Track A and the remaining parent. It's ready for final approval. Next, we have Covenant Church of the Nazarene. They've applied for the subdivision of eleven point nine one zero acre parcel of land known as six hundred Baughman Avenue in Danville. The parcel is zoned RM two, and they are creating tracks eleven A one at three point nine one oh acres and eleven A two at eight acres. The church on Track eleven A one was built while the lot was zoned GRB, was built by conditional use permit in two thousand eight. So we suggested that they note that CUP on the plat because it does not transfer with the property. And Kendall took care of that for us. It's ready for final approval.
Church does not transfer with the property?
The conditional use to build the church in a residential zone, unfortunately, does not, yeah.
Yeah, I can do, all conditional uses are non-transferable with ownership, so if a new church were to come in and purchase that property, they would have to go before the board.
And so that note does not have to be on the plat, or does it?
He has put that on the plat.
He, he added it after TRS.
Okay.
Okay. And next we have Timothy and Misty McCoy. They've applied for the subdivision of one point six six five acre parcel of land located at zero Harrisburg Road or Highway sixty-eight in Boyle County. The parcel is zoned ag. They are creating Track nineteen A at one point six five five acres from the parent tract of McCoy. TRS questioned if the garage in the plat meets the five foot from the property line accessory setback. We suggested noting setbacks or adding a non-conforming note on that matter. We also suggested the remaining acres of the parent tract be shown. With those corrections, it's ready for final approval. And next, we have Matthew Condit. He's applied for the subdivision of a one point two one five acre parcel of land located at zero Elk Cave Road at Minor Branch Road in Gravel Switch, Boyle County. The property is zoned ag, and they are creating Track A at one point two one five acres from the Track One parent tract. TRS asked for clarification on exactly where the road frontage was located, which ends up being Elk Cave. We asked that the floodplain be noted and shown. We asked for a non-conforming note about the garage because it appears to be built within the twenty-five foot front yard setback for an accessory structure in ag. We asked for the remaining acres on the parent tract to be listed and corrections within the title block about the type of plat and the property location. With those can, with those corrections, it's ready for final approval.
So the property goes across Elk Cave Road?
The property is on Elk Cave, runs Elk Cave.
Well, it, it's on both sides of Elk Cave.
Yeah, it's on both sides of the road. It looks like they own the road, which is odd.
They, they don't. Right of way, you know, obviously, just runs through it. It's just on, an all but. My guess is that, that lot was cut out and then the road was built afterwards.
Okay.
That's the property. Let's see what you're saying.
Okay. We need a motion for...
Wait, Mr. Chair. So if I understand right, when we make this motion to approve all of these, they're, the last two are conditioned on them making those changes and then, and then you'll approve that administratively. So we're voting to allow you to, to sufficiently, or to say that they've, that they've made those changes.
Yep.
So I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept all of them.
We have a motion to accept.
Final approval.
Subdivision, uh, final approval from numbers two through five.
Conditioned on the corrections.
With the conditions.
Seconds, yeah.
And, okay, got a second. All in favor?
I'm sorry. No.
All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have James and Margaret Wilburn. They've applied for the subdivision of a one point seven zero five acre parcel located at zero Nosco Road in Junction City. This property is zoned ag. TRS passed on preliminary approval for this plat. So we could review the requirements for creating a non-conforming lot. So with those requirements reviewed, we've realized that the surveyor client must present their case that all the options of making this a conforming lot have been exhausted. If lot creation is then approved by the commission, the surveyor must add a plat notation explaining the new lot is non-conforming and not a buildable lot. On top of approval of the commission for the creation of the non-conforming lot, TRS suggested adding the remaining parent tract acres, rewording the purpose statement to eliminate combining language, removal of combining markings between the created lot and the lands of Isaac. The plat may receive preliminary and final approval today, conditioned upon a motion by the, by the commission to allow the creation of the non-conforming lot and the suggested corrections being made. AGE is the surveyor, and Dale Shepperson will present the request for creation of that non-conforming lot.
And just to, um, explain the non-conformity, it's because they're proposing a landlocked lot that doesn't have frontage, the required frontage that we look for. I included the landlocked policy on the presentation here, but that basically outlines the language that says that Dale has to make that presentation and that those notes need to be included on this special recordation. Go ahead, Dale. Sorry.
Okay, this, um, this happens quite frequently. I mean, we, we've done several, uh, what, what this particular piece of property is. The Isaacs tract was at one time a part of the, the tract that we're creating now. And the Isaacs tract was created, and what that did was the Wilburn property, basically this tract that we're creating, it didn't cut it off from the Wilburn property, but it fits better with the Isaac tract. So the new buyers, of course, came to Wilburn and wanted to know if he would sell them that tract. So yes, he will. The problem with it is it doesn't have any road frontage, so therefore it cannot stand alone. So what we, what we've done is created a tract, and we've labeled it as a non-conforming tract, must be combined with an adjoining property owner. Now, that does not mean that it could be only sold to Isaacs. It could be sold to any of the adjoining that, um, that adjoins the tract, of course. However, in the past, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission has always wanted to know who, that the property that we're creating that is landlocked, if you will, is being combined with. So that's the reason that we're showing it being combined with Isaacs. We have no problem taking that combination off of Isaacs because, like I said, in our purpose statement, we always say non-conforming tract must be combined with an adjoining property or remain with the parent tract. So, uh, as far as us taking the dash line off and the two little connectors, we're, we're good with that, if that's, if that's what you also desire.
Yeah, my, my recommendation for doing that is I just think it creates some confusion. Typically, those lines are what you see for consolidation. So instead of creating that individual tract, it'd be joined with that, um, adjoining Isaac tract, that Track A, and then it would become one lot. But the way that this is going to be done is there's still going to be two separate tracks. He didn't survey Track A because it's not, it's not necessary for what they're proposing to do. So I think just to create clarity and based on what the zoning ordinance says, it's easier just to create that as a standalone tract. It's a landlocked lot, so we would just put the notes that are required in the zoning ordinance and not do the combination because it, it creates confusion, but...
Are the Isaacs buying that from?
They are.
They're...
And what's their rationale for not just joining it to theirs? Because they want to be able to sell it in the future to somebody?
Well, they can't, they cannot join it to theirs until they have it deeded in their name. Okay, so right now it's in Wilburn's name.
Okay.
They have to, they have to get a deed, you know, a plat does not, uh, convey property. It has to be done by deed. So they have to get it deeded to their name. And then if they so desire, they can come back in and combine one tract. But it's going to have two separate sources of title, their house tract and this lot that they're purchasing. That's, that's the only way that you convey it is by deed.
I'm just thinking about if they, if they decide never to combine them, that they're sticky booger, they don't, how they're going to be able to sell that without access.
The only way that they could sell it is to an, an adjoining property.
By having a note on there.
I mean, it's going to be a non-buildable lot that, so even if they went to sell it, it, it couldn't be built upon. It could be farmed or whatever, but it, it couldn't be built upon until it's adjoined with a, an adjoining property owner.
It seemed like the only solution during, when we were at the TRS meeting that, that makes sense here is to have this deed with a comment on there or in the plat here, have that comment on there so it can be a separate deed. Makes sense?
Any further questions? All right, so if there's no further questions, we need a motion to approve or deny the creation of a non-conforming parcel.
And I think, I'd like to make a motion for preliminary and final approval to include the non-conforming comments that we talked about here and the revisions and approve it.
Wait a minute, you're, you're getting ahead of us.
I think you have to...
We, we need a motion right now to approve or deny the creation of the non-conforming parcel. We need that first.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to create, to approve the creation of the parcel, the non-conforming parcel.
We have a motion to approve the creation of a non-conforming parcel. I need a second.
One second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion on this? All in favor of the motion? Motion passes. Now we need a motion to grant or deny preliminary and final approval.
Ready for me this time? Sorry, I got ahead of myself. I'd like to make a motion to do preliminary and final approval.
Okay, we have a motion to grant preliminary and final approval. Need a second?
Subject to the changes, subject to the recommendations.
Yeah, the recommendations.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ruby, seconds. All in favor of the motion? Motion passes. Okay. Number seven?
Yes, sir. Um, Oscar and Don Bailey have applied for the subdivision of a three point six nine oh acre parcel of land located at zero Lower Salt River Road in Boyle County. We're going to have to ask if this one be tabled, however, because the Bayleys were unable to make it in to sign their application and pay their fees.
Okay, we need a motion to table. A motion to table. Yeah, got a second. All in favor to table? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, number eight?
Lastly, we have Tranquil Hill Farms. They've applied for the subdivision of a twelve point one six eight acre parcel known as forty-eight fifty Lexington Road or Highway thirty-four in Boyle County. Property is zoned ag. Vantage is the surveyor. They're simply changing the boundary line between...
They're simply changing the boundary line between tracks 1A and 1B and removing a portion of an access easement from tract 1A. TRS suggested indicating the area from which that access easement originated, which is a 40-foot access off Highway 34, and providing utility signatures and adding the fact they're removing a part of the easement in the purpose statement. Kendall has handled all that. It's ready for final approval.
Any discussion?
Do you want to make a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All in favor of the motion? Motion passes. We have a request from the applicant to the table. Our first public hearing, Jamie Durham, on behalf of Fifth Row Properties.
Yeah, could we make a motion to continue it to the May meeting? That way, we don't have to re-advertise.
Okay. So, we're going, we need a motion to continue this to our May?
May 24th. Let me check. Sorry. May 24th.
May 24th. So, we need a motion to table to continue at our May 24th meeting, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue this item to the May 24th meeting.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Thank you. All in favor? Motion passes. Number two. Joyce Kidd has applied for a zoning map amendment, 1.732 acres of land located on, at Bonta Lane, Junction City. Requested zone change is from agricultural to single-family residential. And this is a public hearing. So, please state your name and address, sir.
Dale Shepperson with AGE Engineering, 165 Foster Lane, Stamford, Kentucky. This particular piece of property is actually split-zoned right now. Part of it is in ag and part of it is R1A. And Ms. Kidd, and this is Mr. and Ms. Shelton, who's Ms. Kidd's daughter and son-in-law, would request that we change the entire lot to R1A from the split of ag and R1A. The lot itself is completely served by sanitary sewer. So, and other than that, there is a, there is a house on the southern portion of the track. And in the end, the Sheltons, what Ms. Kidd would desire to do is split the property in half and the Sheltons build a house beside their mother, mother-in-law, is the purpose.
So, the whole lot, the whole image that I have on, we're going to split that, you would split that in half later?
Yes.
I didn't include that.
And that is not the way that it's going to be split.
Yeah, I didn't include that in the staff report because that's a preliminary drawing that Dale sent. I just included it here so people would know that was their intent to just split into. I don't know how, what the final lot lines are going to look like.
That's what I was inquiring, how firm that was.
Yeah, it's not.
Actually, the division of the two tracks will be one straight line. So, it'll be two rectangles instead of one square is what the division will be once it is completed, if this zone change is granted.
Okay, but this meeting is not talking about that?
No, no.
But that is a future?
Just to add, this is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The future land use map is showing this area as low-density residential. So, going to R1A is appropriate within the comprehensive plan and what it's showing. I did get one call from the neighbor to the north with some concerns. There's kind of, sorry, this isn't the best area, but there's a little bit of a natural drainage area here and just concerns that they were going to fill that in and build on it. I don't know that that's the intent, but I just wanted to mention that I did get a phone call with that concern. I did measure it out roughly. I think it's about 150 feet back. They would have plenty of space in the front to build on it. I don't know if that's, okay, yep, so, okay.
I'm sorry, sir.
We might need you to go to the mic and just restate that.
This is a public hearing.
Sorry. We got to get down the record.
Thank you.
Taylor Shelton, 22D Charleston Green in Dammel right now. Yeah, that's far enough back. And we're going to build a 1,900, 2,000-square-foot house. We have plenty of frontage. And we're just going to beautify that stream and actually make it a little bit deeper. It's going, water's going to flow better, gravel it, make it look nice.
Have you seen it in a flooded condition? Is it, have you seen it where the water runs through that area?
Yes, actually, it runs through the railroad. And railroad had it kind of blocked up for years and it ponded it a little bit. Somebody from the railroad cleaned it out in the last couple of years. So, it does flow naturally, but it still has a little low area. So, I'm going to dig it out a little bit, rock it, make it look nice. And our house will be in front of that, at least 30 feet from the back end of our house in front of that stream.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? All right. Any discussion? Hearing, any, we'll close the public hearing at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment. Based upon the testimony and documents presented at this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the following finding as required by KRS 100.213. That is that the map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you for the motion.
Second.
Are you okay with?
I am, Mr. Manon, I might ask if you would incorporate the staff's reasoning on page three of the staff reports and also just make mention of the fact that where future land use map amendment is typically required here, where the comprehensive plan conformity is specifically that the future land use map is already met. We don't need to make any amendment to that effect. So, staff reasoning and no need for land use map amendment.
It has been included to the motion. I need a second.
Second.
We have a second to the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion as presented? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number three, Dammel, Boyle County Plan and Zone Commission has filed an application to amend Articles Two and Four of the Joint Zoning Ordinance.
Yes.
I think that's a controversial.
What's that?
As it, based on the crowd out here, this has been very controversial.
I did get one call and sent it out and didn't get any follow-up questions on it. Basically, this is just to clean up some language from the plat that came up at Shelby Green regarding condominiums. So, the advisory committee met twice to discuss appropriate changes to help clear up language regarding condominiums. We also looked a little bit more at some of the single-family residential language and decided to remove patio homes from the language just as a result of some confusion of what the definition is of a patio home. When looking online, it's, there's not much clarity. So, it might be difficult for me to determine when an application comes in, whether it's a patio home versus a townhome. Also, the lot size requirements are significantly larger for patio homes versus townhomes. So, it doesn't seem to make much sense to have the different requirements for the two when they're somewhat similar. So, I don't know if I need to go through each point or?
So, what you're saying is you're going to combine those so that somebody can't use that in the future against us and say, well, the ordinance says townhome, but we're going to call it a patio home?
Yeah, actually, townhomes allow for one building on a 5,000-square-foot lot, which allows for four units, versus a patio home allows for one unit on a 5,000-square-foot lot. So, you're actually looking at a 20,000-square-foot lot to be able to do the four units. So, I don't see the likely, I don't see it being a very high likelihood that somebody would even claim for a patio home. And it would be hard for me to distinguish if somebody came in looking like a townhome, whether I would need to require that 20,000 square feet or that 5,000. So, I think it's just easier to remove that language and everything will fall under townhomes. But otherwise, for condominiums, this is our proposed change for the definition. This is probably the biggest change of the ones that we recommended. So, previously, it basically just referenced Chapter 381 KRS and talked about other standards that we didn't actually have in the ordinance regarding open space roads, other development features, et cetera. Now, I'm proposing the ownership of a single unit within a multiple-unit structure or complex in which all common elements are held in joint ownership by the owners of the individual units. So, this would require that condominiums are attached. So, it would basically not allow for it in the single-family residential zoning district. So, we would be looking at it in the RM3 and RM4, which we do have other standards already in the zoning ordinance to stipulate how many units per building, et cetera. And then, again, just removing the language of patio homes, there was just one separate section that explained minimum lot size requirements. And then, I removed condominium language completely from the single-family residential zoning district and then cleaned up language in the multifamily residential and commercial zoning district to remove horizontal property references per Henry's request and just have it be all of KRS 381. He feels that's the more appropriate legal reference for condominiums. So, those are the two changes.
What was the old rationale between horizontal property?
So, KRS 381 covers a whole slew of topics. And there is one section of KRS 381 that specifically is called horizontal property law and that primarily deals with condominiums. Is that the best way to sum that up?
Right, and it's been updated, but the old law hasn't been repealed. There's the horizontal property regime, and then there's the Kentucky Condominium Act. They're both there. There's no need to exclude the new one. And so, that's why we changed it to just 381.
Okay.
Any other questions for me on that?
I just want to add that Michaela really seized on this and did research and took the advisory committee through it with her. So, this is a good product you have before you.
I think it's a very nice-looking revision. It really is. Very simple.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank Michaela for her work and the advisory committee as well. So, at this point, we need to exercise a motion. I guess we can close, I guess we need to close our public hearing. We need to open it for?
Do you all have any comments?
Anybody want to make a comment?
Well, I would, because this affected the project that I've written in order. I would, before you finalize the change, I wanted to know what would happen if?
If you recall the? Why don't you state your name, please? I'm Kendall Wise, from Vantage Engineering. And the Shelby Green project that we recently had in here that kind of spurred all of this discussion about condominiums. So, what would happen then if we came in with a similar plan? Five, what would appear to be, single-family structures that are attached by a wall. There's, say, 10 feet of space between each building, with the exception of a wall that goes from one building to the other. So, then it becomes an attached building, and we could therefore create condos. Is that a? If I brought in a plan like that, could I create, could they be condos? If they were attached, they were seemingly detached, with the exception of a, just a wall that went from one building to the other. Maybe call it a privacy wall. It could look like a privacy fence or whatever. So, I mean, that's the loophole that I'm trying to avoid you creating or get clarification on what would happen in that case if we bring in a plan. Because I just see these developers figuring out ways to make it approvable. What is the, what are you seeing in the reason they don't want to combine them with a party wall? Well, the underlying reason is you can create single-family homes and, you know, and do it more densely than what the typical lot would allow, the Zone R3 or whatever zones you might have that you could build single-family homes in. The smallest or most dense of those zones doesn't allow you to get the buildings close enough to suit some of these developers. And so, the workaround is then to create a private street and a condominium regime where you have a single-family home. They may own a little bit of their yard, but the homes are actually detached. They seem to be single-family homes, but we've set them up as a condominium, you know, neighborhood. And so, the workaround in this case would be attach those single-family homes with a wall so that they are attached and they could be a condominium.
So, your question is whether that could still exist after this, if this gets approved?
Yes.
That's what you're asking?
Is it, if?
For the next time.
It's, there's not enough definition there. It just says that a condominium has to be in an attached building, a unit in an attached building.
And I understand what you're saying about the property becomes smaller, less square footage on there, and your density can be higher in a given area or region. What is it you're doing over there?
It becomes a question of whether we consider a wall attached or not. So, we have language in our ordinance that says an accessory building may be connected to the principal building by a breezeway or other similar structure, but shall not project near the side lot line and the minimum side yard required for the main building. An accessory building will contain three lots, open parts of required buildings that have lines separate for the district. So, it, I don't know if we could consider a wall attached or not, but?
The definition of structure seems to include poles and the pertinences there, too. So, I don't know.
I think the bigger question, though, is the why. The why is the bigger question. If they, is there a reason that we need buildings to be attached to each other to be a condominium legally? Is there a legal reason to make the buildings be attached in order to call it a condominium? That's what you're asking. Because that's what the builders want to know, right? They want to be able to create what appears to be single-family homes, but call it a condo so that they can put more of them together, you know?
Or not together.
But not together. That actually makes, that actually really makes sense to me from a builder's standpoint. That makes a lot of sense to me. And what they're saying is if you're going to, if they have to share a wall, you know, we can make it, instead of, instead of the wall between the two houses, we can make it this wall that they share, right? And they just want to know our why.
I guess my, my reason why for the single-family residential zoning district, I have confusion over whether a condo sublot separates it out from being an individual tract. So, my view of it, when we create condo lots in a single-family residential zoning district, is that we're putting multiple principal structures on a single-family residential zoning district, which is not permitted. So, that's why I want to put the attached language in there so that it has to go in multifamily districts, which is supposed to be more appropriate for this type of?
Right. So?
This type of development.
I agree with you that it's a? I, I agree with you that it's, it's an issue of, it's an issue of intent of how many people, what the density is. The issue is the intent of the density.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get wanting to have the flexibility and I, I tend to agree with that. I think there are just better ways to do it with a PUD. So you're actually creating legal lots of record that are required to have certain frontage. Because if we're, if we're saying that a condo sublot is an actual lot, then they're required to have legal frontage, so therefore they couldn't do a private road. They'd be required to do a public right-of-way to serve those lots. So it's, it's hard for me to grasp the two. We, we can't have it both ways. It's the way that I do it. It's either we view it as we can put multiple primary structures within a common sublot, but then they need to be served by a public right-of-way, otherwise we're not meeting our requirements. Or we make them attached and they have to meet all the requirements that go along with being attached.
And my, I 100% understand. My question then becomes, what is the purpose of the attachment versus the detachment? It's, that's, I guess, I think that's really the, the whole question here is what is the purpose of the attachment versus detachment?
I mean, if we want to leave it as not saying whether it has to be attached or detached, but basically just prohibiting it from anything but R1C or multifamily residential, I'd say R1C because we already allow, allow single-family attached structures such as townhomes and whatnot. So you're already getting that type of, that type of development within the R1C. But townhomes are also different because we require a separate lot to be recreated. We allow for smaller lot sizes, but when a townhome's built, it's still an individual lot. So you're still really putting one unit on one lot versus with a condominium, you're creating a sublot, so you're really still putting primary structures. So, sorry, I'm putting everyone's point in the blender right now.
No, really, it's okay. So you're calling a condo as one unit with, let's say, four sub-units?
I mean, it's one lot.
Right, one, one lot with one building.
With multiple sublots or multiple buildings. The way that Shelby Green was developed, we had multiple primary structures, five to be exact, with five condominium sublots, but that's still one legal lot of record where you can buy, you can purchase those sublots, but it's serving one lot. So technically, we have five principal structures on a property that's supposed to be held to the R1B, Single Family Residential Development Standards. Because RM3, which is what that lot was zoned, required three-to-eight units per building for condominiums. So they couldn't do it as detached. So they had to do either the R1B development standards. So we technically have five principal structures on the lot.
Is there anything legally or intellectually preventing us from allowing them to build multiple single families, but without, without an adjoining wall between units?
Without an attached.
With, you know, that are, that are detached from each other, but just calling those a condo?
I mean, I think if we want to go in that direction, what we should do is instead of changing the condominium definition in Article 2, we should remove the three-unit requirement in RM3 and the eight-unit requirement in RM4 because that's what's requiring them to be attached in my mind. So then if somebody were to come in in the RM3 and wanted to do the Shelby Green style development, they could do it as such in the RM3 zoning standards rather than the R1B, if that makes sense.
That makes more sense.
Does that make sense to you? So I, I'm open to either way. My, really, my hesitation is I just don't want to see it in a single-family residential zoning district as detached. Does that make sense to you, Henry?
It does. I'm thinking about whether we need to delay decision on removal of the three-to-eight units. I think we probably do.
Yeah, this is going to take a little bit, a little longer because I, I hear this and I start thinking about the individual that want to purchase and use individual. Each particular category, we have the type of people or the type of situations that they have on here. And that's exactly where I come from. Because if you're, if you're looking to live in a, in a smaller place, no yard, no concern, just basically what it is, you're going to want this in a, in a category as compared to a townhouse or a condo, that type of categories. They come in definitions. And if I don't get that clear in my mind, I'm going to have troubles figuring out which one of these categories it is. And it's, if you don't have it in your mind, you can't put it on paper yet. And back to the, back to the problem I'm running into.
It gets to intent. I think that that, it all gets to our, we have to, to me at least, I understand all the details, but I want to go up two levels to figure out what the intent is. And I think it has to do with density and in what, in what zones.
Yes, exactly.
So if, if we're talking, we want more density or the, the community wants more density in the comprehensive plan, but it doesn't fit within this particular zone. It might be better for us to think about the zone itself rather than the building structure. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's where I was coming from, deciding which direct, just what you referred to, which direction do you come in off of here? But you need a little better, a little better clarification would be appropriate.
So that, that gets back to the question Michaela was saying of how, how eliminating the limitation in the zone. Is that right?
Yeah, so RM3 basically says condominiums are required to have three-to-eight units per building. So I agree that as, you know, you at least have to have three units attached.
In a building.
In a building. And then you could put as many buildings as you want per the density requirements. But with that three units, if you go and try and do the detached structures like we did at Shelby Green, that immediately doesn't meet RM3 standards. So you have to kick it out to the R1B standards. And my hesitation with it is I don't think you can put multiple principal structures in the single-family residential zoning district, so.
So the, the way that we make this allowable then is to allow multiple single-family detached structures like Shelby Green today in an RM3? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think if, if we want to go in the direction that you're saying, we would just eliminate the minimum requirement of the three and you could just say up to eight units per building.
Right, in RM3, but not R1A.
Yeah, not R1A.
We need to clarify, Shelby, all of Shelby Green is not...
Yeah, it's just a particular lot.
No, no, it's just that, that one lot, that they didn't attach.
Well, the two lots, I should say. Yeah, most of Shelby Green is just...
Correct, it's just that, when I say Shelby Green, I'm talking about the ones that we talked about at the two meetings ago. We're, we're deciding whether or not to make them build a wall to make it conformable and we allow the non-conforming.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I realized my mic's been muted. Um, I, I don't know that a wall would, would be classified as an attachment. And I don't know that it would solve the problems because I still think, I don't, I don't...
And frankly, it seems kind of silly.
We should create something that doesn't require the wall as a loophole.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree, yeah. I, I think that development would have looked worse with a wall running between those three properties rather than how they did it.
So Michaela, are you okay with, I'm dead serious, I want to know. Are you okay with what you just said about allowing multiple properties in RM3, but not R1A like that in small?
What, removing the minimum?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was the other option we talked about when we first broached this subject. It just, it seemed like we were leaning more towards just requiring it to be attached. But if we want to allow for that flexibility within the RM3 and RM4, we might want to look at RM2 and whether we want to allow for something like that. The RM2 is kind of strict in that you either can do duplexes or twin homes or you can do R1A standards, which is pretty stringent. So it'd really primarily be focused on the RM3 and RM4, but...
So are we going to need to table this and come back with something a bit different?
I think that would probably be appropriate, yeah.
I think the, we could, we could table this and next month add on the removal of the three-to-eight unit standard. I don't see any reason that we couldn't go ahead and pass what's set out here now. But if you think that maybe there might be some further harmonizing of the two revisions...
We would have to change the definition in Article 2 that I proposed. We could go back to our old definition, but I think it needs some cleanup primarily because there's language in there that talks about standards that we don't have. And we've talked about potentially adding those standards if we want. But right now, I think we could just clean up the Article 2 definition a little.
Okay.
If we're not, because we wouldn't be keeping what I proposed because we're not requiring a multiple unit structure.
Or complex.
Yep. Is, is that okay with everyone or are you trying to push this forward today?
I, I personally like to have the time to look at it again based on the conversation.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to table this to our next meeting? So, yeah, I saw move.
So we got a motion table and, and a second. Commissioner Ruby, all in favor of the motion? Motion passes.
And Michaela, that means you're going to work on the language so next time we have everything?
So that means the advisory committee is going to have another meeting. We'll address that at some point.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to meet or if you just want me to email out some suggested changes, I can do that as well and you can just give me the AOK.
I think that'd be fine, then we can discuss that.
Okay.
Okay, new business. Advisory Committee report.
I think we just covered that.
Yes.
Budget Committee report.
They did not meet, neither did the Personnel Committee.
Personnel Committee report, other new business, comprehensive plan contract.
Yep, the city and county have officially approved the signing of the comprehensive plan contract with the Bluegrass Area Development District. So I'm just looking for a motion to authorize the chairman to sign that and then we can start moving forward. I, I would say that we probably want one to two planning commission members on the steering committee. I don't know if we want to take a vote on that at next meeting or if we want to discuss that now. But it's probably not going to get started for a couple of weeks to a month. We're going to have to get the, we're going to have to get the powers that be together to decide on a kickoff meeting and then get this thing rolling. But if there's, you know, one to two members that would be willing, it sounds like we're probably going to have six to seven meetings with the Bluegrass Ad at some point with the steering committee. It's probably going to be weekly once it gets started. That's the way they've outlined their proposal. So it'll be somewhat of a commitment. But I do think it would be good to have representatives from the planning commission on that, aside from just myself, so.
Yeah, my, my impression, I guess, is that, oh, Bluegrass, oh, where are they?
Bluegrass Ad, yeah.
DGAD, yeah, Bluegrass Ad. They would be kind of the, my initial impression of this is they were going to be leading this process. That they had a documented process, that they were being hired by the city and the county to come in and we would be participating, but they would be leading and driving it. But it sounds like there will be a steering committee that they will be a member of. And, because I see the word assist here a lot, like, like they are not leading the process, like they are assisting.
I, they're, they're gonna, they're basically going to be telling us what their outline is, setting up. I'm just going to be involved as far as scheduling meetings, getting everyone together in the room, et cetera. But they're going to be responsible for all the data collection and research, hosting the public meetings. They obviously want people within the planning commission and fiscal court, city commissions and city councils involved as well. But they'll be responsible for all the writing, research, mapping, et cetera. It's more just they rely on us to be the liaison to get all the people in the room.
No, it just went through me off was I expected to see them in a leadership role.
Yep.
And I just see the word assist here a lot, like, like they're a consultant to, you know, to the steering committee. But they will be, they do have a documented process. They're going to come in and in conjunction with the steering committee, we will be basically implementing their documented process. They will be leading the, the, the public input meetings or at least helping to organize those.
Yeah, I think the reason they worded it that way is every community has a little bit different idea of how they want to engage the public, how they want to proceed with things. I think their timeline is going to stay the same. But if we want to hold separate community meetings in each of the jurisdictions, if we want to try and get more online engagement, if we want, you know, those types of things, I think they take input from the communities and they go off that, so.
Michaela, one or two notes. I read this as a contract between the ad and us. And then I get down to the bottom and see that the fiscal court and city commissioner are also signatories. And I was just interested to know what the funding relationship is and...
Well, the funding is coming from the city and the county, which is why they have to sign off.
Right, okay.
But it's, it's, it's through Planning Commission because ultimately, city commission and fiscal court approve goals and objectives. But the complete comprehensive plan is only approved by the Planning Commission. So you, you basically have the ultimate say with all the elements, aside from goals and objectives that goes through all four jurisdictions and their legislative bodies.
Okay, but it's...
So I don't know if we need to have that language changed to include it or... I, I kind of view it as a contract with us because the comprehensive plan goes through us, but the funding is going through city and county or...
I, I understand what you've just said and I think that's true in terms of how this plan gets approved. If the city and county already have ordinances on the books providing this funding or if we have no concern about that, I just, I'm, just as, as long as we know that that's where the money is coming from and that the planning commission is not itself on the hook for $48,000.
Okay, if you have some recommended changes, the judge and mayor have not signed it yet. So I can have the ad change it before we get that.
And this is about a 12-month interval, I guess, by the way it reads.
Yeah, um, they, they've proposed to have it go faster, but it, sometimes public input can, can take longer than it's expected, so we'll see.
I would have been more concerned if you told me it was four months.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not concerned over the 12 months.
Yeah.
Exactly.
You don't want to go fast.
Yeah.
I, I don't know that I have a change in mind along the lines of funding. What I expected you to say was, yes, we're totally confident that this money's coming from the city commission, the fiscal court. If that's the case, then fine, we can leave it alone.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have motions that accepted half of the funding. So I think they're, they're aware and are prepared to do so. But legally, you're worried.
I'm not.
I'm happy to make any changes.
Based on that, that legislative action, no, I'm not worried. The, the one change I did have in mind was this. Paragraph four about early termination says that if we call off the agreement, ad gets to keep all money. I think we should add something that says that Planning Commission is entitled to retain all work product in editable format in the event of early termination.
Yes, so you have a deliverable that we own, yeah.
Right.
That's a good change.
And Michaela, do you, do you monitor the funding status and how far we've spent on a regular basis with them? Is there a requirement that we need to track the expenses?
They, I, I obviously have a, I, I'm good friends with the planning director there. So he would structure it the way we asked, whether we wanted to do it like a four-point increment or if we wanted to do a lump sum, like 50% upfront, 50% on the back end. They're pretty flexible with their, with their invoicing and payment.
One of the bullets down here talks about the Bluegrass Ad having a staff two days a week. That's what we'd be funding and that's manpower. And you start counting the number of weeks, the 52 weeks times that number and $48,000, it's not much.
Yeah, I, I think they, they gave us a good price on this comprehensive plan.
So it's, but that's what I was concerned about is whether we run out of money early.
Yep, the, the ad has already said in their interviews that if they go over, that's on them and they'll, they'll eat that cost. They're not going to come back to us for additional funding, so.
But that was my observation. But that was my observation, is the dollar amount is not as high as I was.
Yeah, they have.
That's important, they have other money besides this, so they're.
That's a, that's a really.
Essentially a fee, what they're saying is, we're going to give you this, this many people, this many days a week, for the duration of the project.
That's what I'm thinking too, Tom, is the same thing, it's, and that's fine.
Yep, yeah, the ad gets state funding, this is one of their primary roles, is to help with planning and those types of things for the communities within their region, and so they get state funding to help assist with that, to try and make sure communities are.
Yeah, our money is a shared expense to that, that goal that they have.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
So it's, it's not, there's, we're going on the assumption, and the votes or whatever has been passed through fiscal court and the city commission, that they are paying for this, but it's not mentioned in there, who's paying for that?
The way we could do it is a subsection for paragraph one, the ad's fee, and where the, there are those Roman numeral subsections, we could have a paragraph three that says source of payment, period. Funding for the cost of this contract shall come from the legislative bodies in the form of the fiscal court and the city commission.
Pass per whatever agreement they've made, or votes that.
Subject to their legislative processes.
I think having it in there, and they'll sign it, that, that ties a loose end potential.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I agree.
Of course, there's a lot of ways to manipulate money behind the background, so we'll worry about that later. I think it's very straightforward, it shouldn't be.
Neither the city or the county are going to renege on this, because it would just make them look horrific in the, in the eyes of every other municipality and state.
I think they're also.
They have no intention of going back.
They have, it's to their best, best interests to keep it.
Right, the city and county have no.
That's right.
But it's a good, it's good to put in there, but they're not going to renege on their, you know, on this, they're already voting on it, so, yes, they're not going to do that.
I think we can probably take a motion on it with recommended changes from Henry, and I'll have the ad drop those changes, and then we can get everyone to sign, if that, if that works for you all, rather than delaying it another month, because it's, the ad might start without the, without us being under contract, but it, you know, it, it's better for all of us to be under contract before we get, get going on this, so.
So what's the requirement right now? Do we need to vote on something, or?
Yeah, I think we just.
Subject to amendments.
Subject to amendments.
Yeah.
We need a vote to, you need to give me the authority to sign.
And, and give you authority.
Once, once Henry's cleaned it up, or added the measures that we've requested, and then get it back from Bluegrass ad.
I move that we approve the authority, that the commission approves the authority for the chair to sign the contract, per changes that Henry's adding that paragraph, subject to approval from the city commission and the county fiscal court.
I'd like to second that motion, please.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, any other announcements?
Finally, Mr.
May I ask, you mentioned that there would be members from planning and zoning that would be on this steering committee. Do we need to take any action related to that, or we're just assuming that that will happen?
It might be good to take action, I don't know if that needed to be on the agenda, Henry, I kind of found a bit after I put it together.
Are you mentioning these being the agreement, or?
Now, now that we've approved your ability to sign this agreement, what she had mentioned, what Michaela had mentioned, is that she thought that the steering committee would have representation from planning and zoning, and I just wondered if we needed to take any action related to that.
Yeah, if you want to appoint one to two members to sit on the steering committee. I mean, I, I'm basically going to provide monthly updates to you all regarding the comprehensive plan. The steering committee is just, it's really just a meet to go over and make some technical decisions, kind of keep up to date, and everyone informed on what's going on with the comprehensive plan, and get a smaller group together to discuss any decisions that need to be made that way. But it's, it's not to, it's not to keep people out of the process, it's just to make it a more efficient process, it's a pretty common practice when you're putting together comprehensive plans. So if there's somebody that's, you know, if there's one to two commissioners that are very interested in the comprehensive plan and the process, and want to be involved, it is going to be a little bit of a time, you know, you're, you're probably going to be meeting six, seven, eight times, for an hour to two, so it is a big time commitment, but.
Ideally, we'd have a city and a county representative.
Yes, that would be my recommendation.
So you just want to show hands for people who might, would be interested, or, you can pick whoever we want.
Yeah, pick, that's what I was going to suggest, pick, pick who you think would.
No, I, I don't want to pick, I think, I think you all should nominate and appoint.
Put our names in a hat, with a county head and a city.
That I can do. Yeah, it's, it's all to, to your discretion, I, I'm glad that everyone seems pretty interested, so whoever is great, I, I'm just looking for, you know, a couple members that would be willing to sit in.
Were, were those hands of interest Collier, Mann and Baird, Nollet, Ruby? Others? Okay.
Hey, Michaela, I have some blackout periods for summer travel that I'm doing, so that's the only thing that I have to deal with.
Okay.
I think they probably all do.
Yeah, yeah.
So we need, we need to balance that somehow.
My guess is that these are, if these are done the way I think that they're going to be done, you can, you can zoom in on, on these as well, probably.
Yeah, we could try and, I mean, the city has rooms that have that capability, so we could try and do that. I mean, we could also rotate out based on availability, it doesn't have to be a set.
I was going to say, there's several things you can do, yeah.
Yeah.
You're not fixed.
But it's helpful to have some consistency through it, too, I mean, that's important.
I don't know if the ad will be thrilled about that, but I think if we just had two members per meeting, or? You know, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's to your discretion, it's really just, we don't want to have too big of a group, because if you have 20 people in a room in a steering committee, it can get, I've been in ones like that, it can be, it can drag the process down, so, you know, if you rotate out, we, we'd basically be limited to probably having two members per meeting, so that could be something that you have to coordinate, and could, may or may not be something that you want to do. We could designate two and have two substitutes, so if, you know, one of the, if the city member's not able to make it, the backup city member could join, or, you know, I don't know.
You should look.
I don't want to exclude people from the process either, it's just.
There may be interest in the categories that we're doing in the comprehensive plan, because there's sections that we're doing, more interest in one section over another section. You can do it that way, too, and let, allow us to take greater research in that topic before we then, there's ways for balancing that.
Yep.
Well, and I noticed I'm not on one of the subcommittees currently, so.
Yes.
From a time standpoint, that might be I'm more available.
Okay, yeah. Well, do you all want to vote on this today, or do you want to wait?
Couldn't our chair appoint?
Jeff, would you like to be in charge of appointing?
Not really, but, I think, let's think, we can think about this for a minute.
Yeah, yeah. It, you don't have to decide today, I.
You have all the news, right.
I think, I anticipate probably trying to get the steering to get, committee together once the contract's signed, maybe in the next two to three weeks, to start just setting up a timeline with the kickoff meeting, and when everything's going to get rolling. So that's really the only meeting that potentially we could miss if we waited on it. So I, I don't think it would be anything technical or whatnot, it would just be, okay, we're going to get this thing started June 1, or, you know, whatever it's going to be.
Is it, can we just take the discussion we've had, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not totally opposed to the idea of having multiple people or, or fill-ins, so, and if I, I would recuse myself if I would make this decision, we've got four people, if I take myself out of it, right?
Yeah, I think it was commissioners, Collier, Mann, and Nollet, and Ruby, otherwise.
And then we can, if, we can make a decision in the next week or so, is that okay?
You could easily be a substitute for somebody who becomes ill, or, you know, unavailable to do what's necessary.
Do we, do we have to have a vote on it, or can we just kind of appoint it?
Typical for subcommittees is the chair can appoint.
Chair could also designate the random selection process of drawing from a hat, which seems pretty reasonable.
Either, either way you want.
But then that would preclude the city-county, unless you had a city hat.
Two hats.
Yeah, two hats.
But we only have, what?
You have two and two.
Flip a coin.
Okay. We've got county.
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 City.
City.
Yeah.
City.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can wait on it then, if you want to just make a decision in the next couple weeks.
Okay, or it won't. And the, so the people who are interested in doing this, don't have, aren't opposed to having backup, so to speak.
Yeah, maybe a backup.
Okay. Okay, well, if you just want to draw all the names, that's, I mean, if everybody's okay with that, we've got four people.
Okay, I can, I can do that.
Okay.
Do you want me to do that now, or?
You can just do that and let them know.
All right.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Uh, any further announcements, or, we need a vote on this?
We don't need a vote on this.
Okay.
I've, I've, I had, one, we have a recurring viewer request that we be attentive to our microphones and making sure they're turned on. I will suggest to you that that's important, not just for our viewers out in the internet, but also for creating a record for zone changes, in case we'd ever need a transcript for litigation or something like that. I'll mention this at the beginning of next meeting, so, thanks.
Thank you. Any other announcements, we need, if not, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Douglas made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And Commissioner Sleek seconds, all in favor, motion passes.